That's the old one.
Well, that's the old one.
Yeah, the one is down by.
We did some paintwork on.
Yeah, that's the old one.
That's the old one, okay.
The one that you worked on?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one's going to market.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the one's down by Marine three sixty-five. He bought it in Florida and had it trucked up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I tell you. Probably gonna be asking me to buy a new truck.
Surprised you haven't already.
You ready?
Okay, we'll call the City of Kiwanee Common Council meeting to order for May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Let the record show Jen Court and Conley are excused. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll sign.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five special reorganization meeting and regular common council minutes. If there are no additions or corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve.
No, make a motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four, public comment communications, three-minute time limit per person. There's anyone that wishes to speak before the council tonight, please step up to the podium and state your name and your address. Is there anyone that wishes to speak today? No one wishing to speak tonight, then public comment is closed. Item five, boards, commissions, committees, reports, and staff report. I would entertain a motion to accept and place on file those reports. Rooster?
Just got a quick question.
Rooster, off it all. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Go ahead, John.
Hey, Augie, do we do? How many slips do you think we're gonna be renting this year?
Six.
We're a little larger, I think we're sixty percent.
Fifty percent?
Yeah.
Sixty, I think.
Sixty.
Sixty percent, okay. Sixty percent equates to how many slips?
Sixty. Just a hundred slips there.
Oh, a hundred slips, okay, so sixty percent.
Yeah.
I see there wasn't very many.
Yeah, well, they usually don't certainly go out for the holiday, you're coming out.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Uh, go ahead.
So people wanna know that too, so it gets the public record. I did see in Mr. Eddie's report that the interest rate was reduced on our notes, so we're gonna save almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's awesome. I also see in his meetings, uh, he met with older person Blaha a couple of times. Is there anything that we should know about that?
Nothing I'm aware of. I mean, being a chairman of a committee, he oftentimes will have questions and things.
Yeah, it's been mostly coordination on Marina's most recent, most recently with Marina and getting access to information.
Okay. Make your stop in here. Curiosity, you know, how's everything going, uh?
Does that get it?
Yeah, yes, okay.
Fair enough. Uh, any further discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item six, mayor's report, six A. Approve appointment of John Massler to the Marina Committee for an unexpired two-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'd just like to read a letter we got from the Arbor Day Foundation. Mayor of Olentweider, on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I'm happy to extend my warmest congratulations to Kiwanee on successfully achieving twenty twenty-four Tree City USA status. This well-deserved recognition is a testament to your community's unwavering commitment to the planting, care, and celebration of trees. In an era where cities and towns are facing increasing challenges related to air quality, public health, and climate resilience, nurturing urban forests has never been more important. By prioritizing tree stewardship, you've not only helped enhance Kiwanee's beauty and livability, but you've also invested in a healthier, more sustainable future for your residents. The Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA program has a long legacy of supporting a nationwide network, of passionate organizers and tireless tree planners. Since nineteen seventy-six, we've connected with more than thirty-five hundred communities of all sizes to create and maintain green spaces. While we may all work in different corners of the country, we're all working in unison to create positive change through trees. To be named a Tree City USA is to be part of something bigger. Whether Kiwanee is newer to the Tree City USA recognition program, or you've been part of our network for decades, we hope you are as excited as we are to share this accomplishment with your local media and your residents. To that end, we've included a press release for you to distribute at your convenience. A digital copy of the press release and other materials can be found in the Tree City USA Resource Center online. Once again, congratulations on this outstanding achievement, and thank you for your dedication to Kiwanee's tree canopy. We believe cities that take care of their trees take care of their people. Dan Lam, Chief Executive of the Arbor Day Foundation. So Nathan, you and the guys, Miguel, thanks for your work and getting us back in the Tree City USA. Is there anything you'd like to add to that? Okay. Well done, thank you. Okay, that's all I have on the mayor's report, so we'll move on to item seven, business agenda. Seven A, request to retract prior authorization for closure of Ellis Street from Milwaukee Street to Main Street for a farmer's market. So last month when we voted on this, it came from committee. It was the understanding that all the businesses were in favor and supported the closure of the street. Since making that decision by the council.
What's that?
Mentioned the veterinary. That was the one that hadn't. That's what we were told anyway, so it wasn't all.
Okay, so there was an exception of one, but it turns out there were more than one that were not, uh, we're not on board with that. Um, so I asked to put this back on here, and in the, in the best interest of all the businesses that are down there, I feel that, uh, we should not close the street. And in talking with, um, the individuals that were requesting the closure, they weren't going to do it until twenty twenty-six anyhow, because they were looking to get more vendors. So I suggested to them that they go back, revisit all of those businesses that would be affected, and, um, listen to their concerns, and address those concerns, and then they could come back to the committee with a one hundred percent consensus that they would come back to the council and we could entertain that again. So that's why you're seeing this again tonight. Are there any questions on that?
Rachel. They've got a year to work this out. I don't think, in my opinion right now, I don't, why would we backpedal on this? Just leave it alone, let them work it out. Actually, there, there was two businesses, and it was the veterinarian office and the salon.
I was told by one of the other businesses, hearsay, but I was told that it was other businesses that were on that street as well, but neither here nor there. Uh, the businesses were not in support of it, uh, entirely. So we, you know, we could table it, but my, I mean, what difference does it make if we make a vote tonight? Uh, then it's clear that, um, the original vote has been overturned to not close the street. And if they get everything in order for the next go-around, we can then bring it back to council for a vote again. So it's just a matter of being clear on what the council intentions are. And the council's intentions, I would hope, would be to support all the businesses down there at this time.
Our vote was for this year to allow it, right?
It was to begin this year. No, it was to begin this year, effective this year.
Cause it says in the notes that it was.
It was. It was voted for effective this year, correct?
The start of July.
It was voted in committee, I'm mistaken, not mistaken, Nathan, in committee, Allison said that, she thought most likely that there would be nothing till twenty twenty-six, but it was actually for twenty twenty-five, I think.
It was presented in the committee for twenty twenty-five year, but you said there's a chance it might not make it to twenty twenty-six.
That's correct.
Technically, the approval was for the twenty twenty-five. Season letter was weekly, biweekly, once a month, they really have their ducks in a row on that side of things. They were just looking for the process that they can use to keep it scheduled before the plan.
So again, I think for clarity, uh, for all those involved and that, that are affected by this, I would recommend that the council would overturn that original vote. And then when the individuals that are requesting the closure come back to committee, we can reevaluate it at that time. And they might not come back. I mean, they're gonna say they wanna get more vendors anyhow. And maybe they won't get enough vendors. I don't, I don't know.
If we table it, all we're gonna have is confusion. Then people from both sides are gonna say, well, is it tabled? Are you bringing it back? What are you doing? So can we do it this year? Can't we do it this year? And I think tabling it is just gonna make it a hundred times worse. They can always come back in twenty twenty-six next year.
I mean, the council was more than willing to afford the opportunity if there was a consensus down there. You know, they were more than willing to, and I think that's, uh, that's good. Um, you know, if the businesses feel that it's gonna be a negative impact to their business for whatever reason, that's not a good reason to close the street, I don't hurt to think so.
I think tabling will just cause confusion. I, I'd like to see actual business numbers.
What?
I'd like to see actual business numbers, as in, I don't want hearsay. I wanna know, okay, there's X number of businesses downtown on that street. How many are in favor? How many are not?
I agree a hundred percent. As a matter of fact, I use the word a hundred percent. When they come back to committee to request it next time, that they have a hundred percent of the businesses signed on a document saying that they approve and are willing to go along with the street closure on the dates and times being presented. So I agree with you. We need a hundred percent accountability from the business down there in favor or against.
I got two calls. Two of the businesses.
I received two calls.
Not, not very happy.
Actually, one was in person.
I got one in person too.
So, so, yeah, I agree. So I, I guess, again, um, I would entertain a motion to request to retract prior authorization for closure of Ellis Street from Milwaukee Street to Main Street for a farmer's market. We have a motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, item seven B, authorize the annual waterfront car show to use a portion of the Marina parking lot area on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mills.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seven C, consider disposition of abandoned dock located in Marina boat launch to Muscat City Sportsman Club.
Nate, you wanna take this one?
There's a abandoned dock that's on the side of the parking lot, all since I've started here. It's that blue steel structure. Steel bond, you know. Anyone representatives from Muscat City Sportsman's Club reached out to the, to myself, and I believe Augie, they're looking to see what their plans were with that dock. They're interested in potentially taking possession of it and use it on their private pond to do a, learn to fish mentor program. So I wanted to get it before the committee, before we could give it away. We, I've tried, I've asked around, I don't know anybody that wanted to own it, so.
Love you, and there's the next lane.
Yeah, they just used it, used the boat for for the fish in the river. But the river is, there's not enough oxygen in the river anymore, to hold the fish there.
Table.
So now they put it behind the tug, hold the fish there. Well, it is, nobody wants it, it's obsolete, so. Team River, whatever. Nobody wants to take ownership of it, so it is what it is.
I'll make a motion.
Those other two docks that are sitting in the, uh, boat launch area as well.
I'll make a motion.
Here we have a motion. Is there a second?
A motion to do what?
A motion to, uh, dispose the abandoned dock located in Marina to Muscat City Sportsman Club. And is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven D, adopt ordinance number six five six dash two zero two five amending section fourteen dash one of the City of Kiwanee Municipal Code Comprehensive Plan to redesignate a certain parcel of land on the twenty-year general plan design map from highway commercial to residential for property located at one oh nine Duval Street, Brett and Troy Spider Webb, owners and applicants.
Uh, the applicants have requested to resent a southern property, a southern portion of their property from currently B one local business to R one single family. To process that request, um, which is next, a comprehensive plan amendment was necessary because the property is currently designated highway commercial. So, um, it would need to be designated, redesignated as residential. Plan Commission held their hearing on it on April twenty-fourth and approved recommended approval of this proposed change to the plan map. I have attached the ordinance for your review and, uh, staff recommending approval.
Do they understand that once they go to R one, it's difficult to get it back? Are they looking to do something that's not allowed in that business district?
Hmm.
Or could it go under a conditional use, whatever the, would it be better to approve a conditional use rather than change the zoning?
This is mostly for, the primary reason to do this is because they're trying to get refinancing of their residents, and they can't do it with a B one zoning. It's considered non-conforming, relatively speaking, so in order to get it through the financial people, they have to redesignate as a residential zone. Yeah, I was not signing.
Okay. Uh, so I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number six five six dash two zero two five amending section fourteen dash one of the City of Kiwanee Municipal Code Comprehensive Plan to redesignate a certain parcel of land on the twenty-year general plan design map from highway commercial to residential for property located at one zero nine Duval Street. Brett and Troy Spider Webb, owners and applicants.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mills? Is there a second?
Sure.
Who did? Check down. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seven E, adopt ordinance number six five seven dash two zero two five amending section ninety-four dash eight of the City of Kiwanee Municipal Code zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of land from B one local business district to R one single-family residential district for property located at one zero nine Duval Street, Brett and Troy Spider Webb.
Uh, this is the other half. At the hearing, the applicants then further disclosed that they run, they're still doing their art studio out of the portion of property they're living in, but then the other part of the property, they're also renting it out as a uh, Airbnb of sorts. And I contacted them for clarification today, and it turns out that the two units are basically separated from each other. So they more or less have a duplex, not a single-family residence there. So reselling them to R one might help them get through their financial stuff in the interim period, but now we've got a, we'd be creating a deliberate nonconformity in the R one district. Because the one unit could theoretically be rented out as a entirely separate unit rather than just as a temporary use, you know, like short-term rental would be like one night here or there. And that didn't occur to me, cause it didn't, I didn't even know about it until they showed up at the hearing and said, oh yeah, we're using, we got two separate units. It's like, oh, okay, great. So there are a couple of actions you could take at this point. You could say, we could table it, and I can go back to the applicants, and we can request to take file for another, they essentially changed their application from R one to R two, so we can actually approve it as a duplex, which is what it actually is. Um, or a two-family. But the mayor and I have discussed this, and it's sort of, it makes us a little uncomfortable to create an R one zoning for a property that's not technically an R one. Not technically.
It's known to be multifamily current, so.
Could they get that surveyed? And just have those two parcels as one parcel there? It's the same building though.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's all in one building. It's not, yeah, it's, 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 it's all in one building, so they, they sent me a designated map, and they said, okay, we live over here, and then this area is completely separate, that's what we rent out. Okay, great. So, uh, unless they can demonstrate that it's not a complete unit, but if they're gonna rent it out like it's a, like any other Airbnb, it would have to have meet certain standards and qualifies as a rental unit. Even if it's just a temporary.
Should we have approved this one?
The, the plan amendment is fine because it just creates a residential designation on the cop plan map. This one, however, is.
Zone.
Yeah, and, yeah, so we probably, my recommendation at this point is rather than adopt, uh, suggest we table this application, and I go back to the applicants and recommend further most recent disclosures that we.
They still have options if we do nothing.
Yes.
They could either separate it out to create an R one situation, or they could come back and request an R two designation.
Yes, I could go to them and give them that option. If they wanna keep it as is, they keep the operation as is, then I would recommend to them, we go through the Plan Commission with an R two designation on their property.
Is R two still a single residential? I, R three is multi?
R two is two families, so you could authorize.
We got two flex.
And it would be one and then.
Embraced yet, so.
Yeah. Yeah, now.
Well, or if they were gonna go to multifamily even more, then they would, would need an R three, so I think they need to have a better understanding of what they want.
And my understanding is whether they, an R one designation or an R two designation, that's not gonna adversely affect their financial applications and what they're doing.
Right, R one and R two for purposes of building code are treated the same.
Same, exactly. I make a motion, we table until they come back and request an R two.
We have a motion to table? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What would be, what is the difference with, with those designations between whether they operate it as a short-term rental or a long-term rental? Like an ongoing.
I, I don't believe there's any difference in regards to that. It's the fact that if you've got two separate dwellings on the same property.
It's two separate households.
Yeah, it's two separate units.
You got two separate sets of everything, so from that perspective, having them side by side, the only benefit that they have is that they're actually on site while somebody else is using another property, so they know exactly what's happening. Or, no. Not exactly, but they, they know when it's loud. Um, so in that respect, it's actually better than most, but at the same time, you still have basically two units potentially at times.
Try to separate out, what are the current logistics of it versus, well, if they change their business plan and move out and resell the property?
Well, you can't go to the future, but, but, but currently, the reason that it's business is because they had the events there. Uh, they rented it out as commercial space, uh, for wedding groups, the wedding parties and things like that. There is a, uh, I think part of it was residence, but it was business, all right? So now that it's becoming their primary residence, I, I can't speak to all of their strategy, but, um, for their, their financing, it needed to be considered designated residential.
A portion of their properties out there will remain business.
Well, the entire property is going residential, of course.
Well, the portion that's going to residential is the southern piece. They finally recorded the CSM that they got approval for three years ago. So it doesn't show up on the parcel map yet, but it was reported. So the southern portion of the property, which includes the building, would be redesigned to residential, the northern part would be, remain designated as highway business or highway commercial. And then that portion is currently zoned I three business park. So it's, it's goofy. It's, the whole thing is goofy, but.
But that's, that goes way back, right? So if we're taking what their request is here, uh, face value, it, it's gotta be tabled. I mean, until they come with us with something that conforms to the use, we're not gonna change it.
That's right.
So. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to table. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seven F, consider adding water and power service to, services to one campsite in the city campground.
Uh, yeah, Marina has requested consideration, um, as noted in the attached, the campground currently has twenty-nine contracts paid in full with another four down payments and two sites remaining. One of those is the subject of this request. Um, basically, the campground is essentially full or booked. Um, request is for a campsite number one located on the southeast end of the campground. It currently lacks water, electric services, so any tenant of that site would need propane for cooking and get water from the bathroom or bottled water or whatever. Um, these utilities are incorporated in the cost of the campsite lease, so anyone paying for this site would be paying for services they would not receive. Uh, it's currently not factored in the fee schedule for the Marina. We don't factor in on, on, on utility sites. Uh, Marina managers requesting or solicited requests for electrical services upgrades from four contractors, got two estimates back, one from Harz Electric for one thousand four hundred eighty dollars, and the other one from K five Service for two thousand seven hundred twenty dollars and fifty-two cents. Marina managers indicated that staff coordinating with Public Works and Utilities would do the electrical or the plumbing extension work. In my own analysis, it's sort of a good problem to have. It means that we're full. Um, which is a good thing for the Marina, to have the campground essentially full. So part of that, part of the reason why we're full is because we're also the cheapest act in town. The one on the top of the hill, but is there rates, the one over at, uh, one over at Salmon Harbor, they raised their rates, so we're actually cheaper than everybody else by a good stretch now.
We probably should try to stay competitive with them, because we don't wanna be undercutting local businesses. Um, Augie, how much, uh, would that seasonal site cost then? What would the revenue on that be in a year?
Well, it's about sixteen hundred.
So, I, I mean, on a business side, it's a no-brainer to do the upgrade. Um, I, I, yeah, I don't see a problem with that, but I do want to probably have the Marina Committee or someone look at the fee schedule, just to make sure we're not terribly undercutting their, their campgrounds.
Like the campground up on top of the hill, I mean, they got more amenities, so you compete with that.
You gotta weigh it in. Yeah, I mean, just a strict site, you know, we're, we're, we don't have a pool and all that sort of thing, so.
Yeah.
Right. Factor that all in, so. Uh, Jim?
That was my question, was the revenue.
Yeah.
And what's it brought some cost then to do the, the water side of this?
Yeah, it's gonna be a little less than a hundred. Cause we're gonna be doing most of the work, we're just being material.
It's around two grand, and then the revenue opportunity that easy will pay back fairly.
All right, uh, is there a motion to approve adding water and power services to one campsite at the city campground with the, with the monies coming out of the Marina Fund?
Do you have a recommendation on which one to do the electrical service?
Uh, can you include in your motion?
Um, Harz Electric for one thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Harz Electric, and that's a second? Any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Blaha?
Yep.
Rooster? House?
Yes.
Off to the.
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, seven G, financial reports for January two thousand twenty-five. If there are no additions or corrections, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
I see on the, on the January of twenty twenty-five, uh, the month end, I see there were just probably nothing big, but I see there were no utilities charged off to the Marina that month.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how that happened. I don't know if we, I don't know if we missed something or what, but.
I just see, because, you know, we gotta pay the bill anyway, but it affects the other departments. I mean, if you're taking two thousand dollars off, then that'll affect what, you know, what's charged off to the other departments, but. It just wasn't a big deal. I just see there, that there was no utilities charged off.
Interesting. We'll have to check on follow-up on that, see what we got. Okay.
All right, uh, then do I have a motion to accept and place on file the finance reports for January twenty twenty-five?
I will.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Announcements, are there any announcements this evening? Any announcements? All right, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh my god. One second.
Hey, Ned is here tonight. Thank you, Ned. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all.